To call the Olathe Board of Education October Regular Meeting to order? Joy, could you do the roll?
Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
Will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Mafalin has a quick statement before we begin here with our recognitions.
Well, good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's Olathe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin our recognition, staff presentations, and community public comments, we feel it's important that we review the importance and guidelines of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. For those community members in attendance who have signed up for public comments, please come to the podium when the board president calls your name. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, yelling, foul language, props, visuals, and addressing the audience are not permitted. In addition, per Board of Education policy, the public comments forum may not be used for political promotion or gain. Failure to adhere to these guidelines will result in the loss of future opportunities to participate in public comments. After public comments have concluded, the remainder of the meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Patrons who stay for the remainder of the meeting after public comments do so in an observatory role. Those who disrupt the meeting will be asked to leave and will lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for your interest and for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you very much, and now we're on to recognitions and awards.
Good evening, I am thrilled to present our recognitions tonight. We're going to start our recognitions with a group of students from California Trail. Wadayana Jane, Baishnabi Lakshman, and Dave Meyer Nyer, please come forward along with your coach and principal. These three amazing California Trail 7th graders recently received an honorable mention in the 2021 Project CS Girls National Competition for Middle School Girls for their software project KYVS, or Keep Your Vehicle Safe, submitted in the Safer World Competition category. Out of 38 finalists nationwide, the California Trail team was selected for designing software that informs a car owner before a thief breaks into a car by using a camera and smartphone technology. What an amazing accomplishment, and I think I speak for all of us when I say we are so impressed and we cannot wait to see what you do next. Congratulations. Congratulations again. Our next recognition is very special to us. I'd like to ask Dr. LaShelle Sig, our Associate Superintendent for Human Resources, to come forward to accept an award of the cap of the district. Last month, Forbes came out with their list of top employers in the state of Kansas. The Olathe Public Schools was named to the number four spot of top employers in the state. Forbes selects America's Best Employers by State based on an independent survey from a vast sample of more than 80,000 US employees for companies employing at least 500 people in their US operations. Providing our staff with an extraordinary place to work is a priority for the district. And as Superintendent Jaeger recently said, to be recognized by Forbes as one of the top five employers in Kansas is a direct reflection of the incredible educators, support staff, and district employees who make up the Olathe Public Schools. So congratulations to everyone involved. And then finally tonight, I'd like to ask Superintendent Brett Jaeger to come forward to present a special recognition. Dr. Jaeger?
Joy, do you want to come down here? We're going to ask you to come down. So I want to take a moment to recognize an incredible member of our team here in Olathe, and that's Board Clerk Joy Bonderron. Joy has been with our district for 23 years, is what the piece of paper tells me, which is pretty incredible. Eight years as our Board Clerk, and Joy is retiring at the end of this month, so... She's not excited about that. She's been a tremendous resource for us and has helped the district administration and the Board of Education navigate some challenging times. I think that's probably an absolute understatement, but thank you, Joy, for all that you've done with that. We'll miss her as a dear friend at the education center. We'll miss seeing her every day and the joy and smiles she brings to all of us. But Joy, on behalf of the Board of Education and District Administration, I want to thank you for all that you've done for the Olathe Public Schools. You are appreciated, and congratulations. Come down, we're doing bigger pictures.
Well, you guys are pros. All right, guys, you know the drill. We're going to do a couple.
All right, and now we are on to information presentations, 3.01 Learning Services Update.
So we have members of our Learning Services team, Barb Gonzalez and Angela Epps, they think are going to walk us through some of the work that's happening related to market value assets in our district.
Okay, my name is Barbara Gonzalez, and with me tonight is Angela Epps, and together we make part of our Career Pathways Team. We are here to share an update on real-world learning opportunities and market value assets that are going on in our buildings and opportunities for our students to be able to learn. So in order for us to really explain about real-world learning and what is happening in our district, I think we need to probably start with what is a career pathway? And this graphic is one that has been shared before, but I think it bears, is really worth repeating and seeing again, because it really is a model that was adapted from our state model and customized for Olathe to represent all of the different career pathway options that are happening in our district. As you can see, we are one district with many different options, really great options, and no matter what school a student goes to, there's sure to be a career pathway option that they would want to explore. So real-world learning experiences span our system, beginning in elementary school with some really great career awareness opportunities, and then continue through middle school with some career exploration, and then finally culminate at the high school level with some career preparation activities. And so in high school, students really have the opportunity to focus on a specific career pathway and take a sequence of courses in that defined pathway to help prepare them for their future interests. Additionally, we have some capstone courses that students will take, and that's really where a lot of our real-world learning and market value assets are obtained. So we have partnerships in place and many others that are being developed, specifically one with Junior Achievement, to bring some real-world learning opportunities to our students. And this is through a program that's called 3DE. And we look forward to bringing some of those amazing partnerships to our classrooms and our students and implementing this program late at one of our high schools next year.
Olathe has a variety of career pathway options to explore in high school. We have 15 21st Century Academies spread out across the five high schools. We have career and technical education pathways and fine and performing arts programs at all five high schools. And we have the nine programs at the Olathe Advanced Technical Center that are half-day programs for juniors and seniors. Our goal is to have all students choose a pathway while focus, to focus on while in high school. There are many reasons that we encourage students to focus on a career pathway in high school rather than just randomly taking courses. When students explore a pathway, they have a chance to experience a career field and decide if that is a career that they want to pursue after graduation. If they explore that pathway and realize it's not for them, that is a win. They won't have to spend money on college degrees in something that they don't enjoy doing. If they explore a pathway and realize they do want to pursue it, then they are a step ahead towards their future goals. Students will develop essential skills in any career pathway they choose. Essential skills are sometimes called employability skills. Some of these skills are collaboration, communication, and leadership. These are critical skills to any career students decide to pursue. In our career pathways, students have the opportunity to apply technical knowledge in work-based learning experiences. These experiences include things such as job shadowing, client-connected projects, mentoring, and internships. Finally, students can get a jumpstart on college and their career as many of our career pathways have college and articulated credits embedded into them. As students at our high school, they will be, there will be some new vocabulary introduced to them and opportunities presented to them. One of these is market value assets, or MVAs. Many MVAs are gained through involvement in those career pathways. Our district has a lofty goal of 100% of our students graduating with at least one MVA by the year 2030. Students have an opportunity to engage in internships or client-connected work. Students may take courses that earn them college and articulated credits, helping them save time and money after graduation from a high school. Industry-recognized certifications can also be earned. Examples would be a Certified Nurses Assistant, OSHA 10, personal fitness trainer, and more. Many of these are required by the industry to obtain a job. And finally, entrepreneurial experiences may include creating your own business, product, or service. We have a district-level Career Pathways Team working to help scale these MVAs across all five high schools, Olathe Advanced Technical Center, and Mill Creek Center.
So I get to share some data related to all of our MVAs. And the first one that we're going to talk or share with you is data on the internship MVA, which is one that's generally achieved by our seniors, which is the reason why you don't see any freshman, sophomore, or junior data on this chart. We really have seen the effects of COVID hit this particular MVA the hardest, mainly because businesses aren't able to support our students coming out into the industry, because either they're still working from home or we have industries like the healthcare, one where they really aren't able to accommodate our students for their safety as well as our students' safety. But with the help of our new career pathways facilitators that are part of our team that Angela was referring to, we really hope to change this trajectory to make this a more positive experience and opportunity for our students and develop additional ways to get students out. One of those is also to create more client-connected work, where the students don't necessarily have to go out into the industry, but the industry can come to us. And say a business has a website that they want to develop, they can come to our students. Our students can develop that website, they don't have to leave our campus, but they're still working with that industry partner and doing that client-connected work. So we want to gain more of those types of experiences for our students as well. And we're really working to build more of these opportunities for all of our programs. We see a lot of our internships being accomplished through our academies, but the students that are involved in academies are about 25% of our student population. So the other 75%, we want to open up opportunities for them. And so we feel like we can do that through expanding our work experience, application-level courses in our comprehensive career and technical education programs. And so the career pathway facilitators and with the work that I do as a curriculum coordinator alongside Angela, we feel like we can build additional opportunities that will expand this to that 75% that we're kind of missing. And so we know that not every student is going to go out and do an internship. We don't have the capacity to support that, nor does the industry have the capacity. But we know that actually going out and doing this work alongside the business and the industry professionals is one that really helps those students understand the skills that are needed and be able to apply those skills. So college and articulated credit data, we have 776 seniors that have taken at least one class for college credit and another 722 seniors that have taken at least one class for articulated or advanced standing credit. However, only 427 of those total cumulative numbers have a total of nine or more college or articulated credits combined, which is what a student has to achieve in order to earn this MVA. They have to have nine or more credits. And so right now, we're at about 14% of our current senior class on target for obtaining this MVA. And then about 1% of our current juniors have already taken some sort of college or articulated credits. And while we offer some of these college credits to 9th and 10th graders, again, it's usually an upperclassman opportunity for them to earn. We don't really have any of this year's data that we can plug in because we have just reached the, basically, the end of first quarter. So at the end of first semester, we'll be able to input additional data to increase these numbers for those students who have completed their credits for first semester. Our students can also earn an industry-recognized certification in a lot of different areas, and some beginning in 9th grade. So this is a great way for our 9th graders to get a jumpstart on earning MVAs. And a lot of students graduate with multiple certifications, which is fantastic. So the current senior class has about 7% who have already earned over 265 individual certifications. And then the current junior class has about 6%, and the current sophomore class has about 6% as well. We would like to see these figures increase through the years to see more significant gains in helping students to graduate with these credentials, because we know that it really prepares them to be work and life-ready. One instance that we have here that really, I think, hits this one hard is that the Healthcare Science Program at OATC is in its second year of its existence, and we've been partnering with Olathe Health. And those second-year students are participating right now in a phlebotomy technician program. And Olathe Health has said to us that they are in dire need of certified phlebotomists and that they will hire our students if they get their certification by the end of first semester. They will hire them for work second semester. So before they even graduate, they can be out there working and earning, you know, anywhere from $15 to $18 per hour. So this is an opportunity that is a double bonus for our students, and we want to look for more of those. Entrepreneurial data is not one that we've actively been collecting in our district, but one that we know we need to figure out a way to capture this information a little bit more actively and accurately. But we know that we have But we know that we have some really great entrepreneurial experiences that are happening across our system. One is at Mill Creek. For instance, they've been engaging their students in creating business plans and carrying out a spring printing service. And so that's an excellent opportunity for those students. Many of our high schools operate a school store where they are designing and creating and marketing and selling and merchandising products in a physical or sometimes even a virtual space. And we're looking at ways that we can expand that to all of our high schools so that all of our marketing students will have that culminating opportunity. Overall, since we began collecting our MBA data, we have increased even through the pandemic, which I think is really a testament to the work that is going on with our teachers and our district staff that's helping to support this effort. We've already attained about 19% of this current year's seniors with at least one MBA and haven't been able to plug in again much of our data because we're only through first quarter. So we see that really think that this will continue to grow as we get some of our additional data in through the course of this year. And we're confident that we will be able to stretch that figure into that 30% range, moving us closer to our goal of 35% by the end of this school year.
Along with graduating from high school, we want our students to earn one or more market value assets. Participating in our career pathways is the process to get there. They have been specifically included in our strategic plan and our portrait of a graduate. Our district's strategic plan, as you know, is designed to meet the needs of all students, including multiple avenues for students to obtain market value assets. We are proud of our continued work to provide all students real world experiences that meet their specific interests and future goals. Are these goals big? Absolutely. But we would not want anything but the best for our students. We are thankful that we live in a community where we can partner not only with our staff, but also local business partners to support our dedication to career pathways for all. If you go to the Olathe District website at olathe schools.org, you will see a career pathways global button on the lower right. If you click on that, it will take you to the landing page for all of our career pathway options. We are always looking for more ways to provide real world and work-based learning experiences for our students through our career pathways. We will continue with our goal for students to enhance their post-secondary opportunities and prepare them for their future.
Thank you. Any board members have questions, comments?
I was going to ask a question about the, if there's companies that are willing to partner with with the district on things like this, what that process looks like perhaps? And, you know, who to contact and what, I mean, is it an arduous process or is it a big one? I know there are certain.
Yeah, if you know of anybody, you would want to send them our way, either email or phone call. And then we would walk them through the steps. We have work-based learning employers handbook and student handbook. So we would provide them with that. And then we would talk to them about kind of the process of getting started. And really it's customizable to the business. It depends on the business schedule, it depends on the student's schedule and how that works together. So there's not like one set way to do it.
Great, thank you.
And I'll add on to that, that we do have a link on our websites where they can click on that link and fill out a form demonstrating their interest. And then that allows us to be able to reach out to them. We are working on a way where if they have an internship opportunity, that they can enter that internship and it will go onto a job board for our students to be able to go and look and explore and select on their own. So that's coming in the future.
Thank you.
I have a question. When we look at the college credit MBA, how do we navigate the barrier of finances for some of our students and families to achieve that?
So of the college credits, the, there are some that students have to pay for. And then there are some that if they qualify for Excel and CTE, those credits are actually the tuition is waived through the program. There's a Senate bill with the state where it used to be Senate Bill 155. It's now called Excel and CTE. And those, that program allows the college to waive the tuition for those high need, high wage areas. And so students can take advantage of that. A lot of the college credits that are offered through our Lath Advanced Technical Center or through our CTE programs are just that type of a credit. So for instance, our electronics program at OATC, students can come out of there with 17 credits of college, all paid for for free. They don't have to pay anything. So that's pretty amazing. We do also have scholarship opportunities within the district that students can apply for. And then those, those fees that they would normally have to pay could be waived.
And there is also the all but that helps fund those.
And then maybe just not another question, but I know when we received this presentation in the past, there was a breakdown per high school. Can you provide, maybe at a later date, provide that type of a breakdown?
Yes, we certainly can. We, we would have put it in here, but it would have been a really lengthy chart. So we can definitely do that though. And our hope is that we can then supply this data to our principals so that they can have that breakdown and really identify where their areas of need are in their individual buildings so that we can then work with their staff to put in place some actions to address those needs.
I may point out that that's part of the work also that Mr. Reeves is doing with the strategic plan and getting our balanced scorecard together. The goal is to have our scorecard of all these areas just publicly accessible on our website and that would first be district level data and then potentially click a button and then be able to see school level data as well. So our hope is that before long that we'll, no pressure, Mr. Reeves. Before long that the data that we're really tracking related to our strategic plan, both with MVAs and the rest of it will be real publicly accessible to our community.
Thank you.
With the academies, students used to enter either in their freshman year or their sophomore year. And there was an entry process. With the, with the MBA, are we looking at various entry points regardless of what year the student is? And if they decide that they have an interest in something when they're in the middle of their junior year, is that still accessible to them?
So the, the process, once we went 912, we moved that entry process to entering as a ninth grader. And our system is set up that students take courses within the academies all four years. And those typically build upon each other. We have always naturally on boarded students later in their high school years based on their past experiences, if they're a move in. And so I even keep data on, on that as well. We've had well over 50, maybe even 75 students that have applied over the summer and into the, right up to the school year starting on top of what was in the applications last year. And so really entering as a junior is a little tough just because they haven't had the background. But then again, they may have taken some other elective courses that give them some of that. So it's really just dependent on, and also if there's seats available. We're really limited by space. And so once those seats get full, if there isn't any spaces there, then, then that's, that's a factor in quite a few of them. But I always, they always get sent to me if there's a request. And then I go to the, to the academy and check to see if there are seats available. And if so, then we go through that application process individually for each kid.
And a student isn't required to be in an academy in order to obtain an MBA?
Oh, absolutely not. No, this is career pathways for all. So if you remember the overarching career pathway symbol, and then there were four boxes underneath it, it's academies, CTE, fine and performing arts, OATC. So it doesn't matter. You can get them anywhere.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now on to public comments. Mr. Gary, will you read?
Sure. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to two minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. And if a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Kamal Kar.
Hi, I want to thank you guys first for giving me this opportunity. I'm a student at Olathe East and I entered the district when I was in eighth grade. I am now a senior. My here at class was honors English too, because my teacher always encouraged open conversation. Personally, the leaders in my school, including teachers and administrators, have always made a place for me to belong. The current events in our community are frustrating to me as a student. I'm come from the New York City education system, so it is difficult to disappoint me. But I am disappointed today. Before I get further, I must ask everyone to think, when and why did my education become so political? There's an abundant difference between transparency and just pushing a political agenda. In public schools, we shouldn't be prohibiting certain books due to their content. Each student in the district you serve has a different and unique culture. As a proud Punjabi Sikh daughter of immigrants, I want to see myself reflected in different literature. It is important we listen, we learn, and we understand those stories. Reading allows all of us to gain knowledge of the outside world. So as elected leaders serving on the school board, get out and learn those stories. Go to work schools and learn where your students come from. Learn about us. Remember the last time you stepped into a school building during the school day? Additionally, I ask that as leaders for our district, we have a strong commitment to racial equity. Know our demographics and expand your knowledge. The school board has made great strides to ensure my education is valuable. So I ask that we keep moving forward and we protect our students and teachers in the process. The teachers who are making the future and really are the backbone of our education system. Plato once said, "Folks give a soul to the universe, wings to the mind, light to the imagination, and light to everything." Thank you.
Karen Bishop?
My name is Karen Bishop. And this is my last, my final year as an Olathe parent because my third child's graduating in May. My reason for being here tonight is to thank this Board of Education for the work they've done for each of my children. While I appreciate that the Olathe schools taught my kids the three Rs, they would have gotten that in any school district. I remember being in a focus group a really long time ago as a brand new Olathe parent. And I was really worried about taking like all of these kids from all these backgrounds and putting them in a little box for a couple of years and then getting them ready for a million different futures. And I had no idea how you guys were going to do that for my kids. But you did, and I'm so grateful for that. Olathe Public Schools is special because of the myriad opportunities for kids to create their individual paths through a public school system. A particular benefit for many, but especially for my family, is this board's support of the arts. In fact, I'm going to book it after I'm done talking. My kid's doing a jazz solo at a band concert across town. Olathe has always committed to teaching the whole child and the arts are not add-ons. They are beneficial for themselves, but they also bolster those three Rs. I'd also like to thank building administrators for their work for individual students. My kids were not straightforward and easy. And I have sat in hours and hours of really difficult meetings with some of you up here on this board today. We were always able to handle those issues at the building level because those administrators were interested in each particular kid's individual needs. And I really appreciate that our administrators have been so wonderful about that. So Board, I would just like to thank you for guiding this wonderful school district, for hiring all of the right people, for giving them the right tools and setting the right guidelines for all of the students that need to be educated in our community. There are so many of us who are so grateful. Thank you so much.
Next up is Eric Zink.
Hello, my name is Eric Zink. And while a few of you may know of me, it's more likely that most of you know me because of, of my kids. All three of my children attended grade school, middle school, and graduated from high school in this district. In fact, our choice to move to Olathe was specifically made with the consideration for the school district and the area. You may have noted my eldest daughter, whose experiences at Olathe North has launched her successfully in a graduate study program abroad at Trinity Dublin College. Some of you may have been served coffee by my daughter Rachel at the IRC as she completed her time with the latest schools in the focus program at Mill Creek. Or perhaps you saw my son with the district poster for accolades earned while attending Olathe Northwest. Each of my children was a difficult, was a different challenge. What took active involvement for us as parents? The experience and education our children receive from Olathe Schools was due in a great part to the leadership and direction given by this body. I won't say that every decision was one that we wholeheartedly agreed with, but I always felt that as a rule, the board's work was guided by the best interest for our children and the community. For this reason, I wish to thank you for all you have done for allowing my kids to learn, think, grow, and be prepared for their future. I also want to take this moment to remind you that there are many people who like me, who don't usually express our satisfaction publicly. In the current environment, where you hear the loud voices of the few, I wish that you might hear the silent approval and the appreciation of the many who share my sentiment. We are not loud, but we are, we are many. Thank you very much.
Stacy Nell?
Good evening. My name is Stacy Nell. I'm the executive director of the Kansas African American Affairs Commission. I'm here tonight because we're all aware of an unfortunate event involving two students in Olathe South High School and an invitation to a homecoming. This is exhibit A for why the Olathe school system needs to make diversity, equity, and inclusion a priority. I begin with a quick reminder that DEI is not CRT and the two should not be confused. And while I think there's actually wide agreement that C, Critical Race Theory, that is the theoretical framework for master's degrees and doctoral dissertations, has no place in the K through 12 system. I do believe that all children would benefit greatly from learning about a variety of peoples and cultures. Perhaps such an appreciation would have prevented the unfortunate choice of a homecoming proposal. I have spent this week wondering what the school's roles might be in all of this. There's a saying that when we know better, we do better. And I think that's where the schools come in. Schools are places where children are taught to know things. And an education that explores and celebrates diversity makes it clear that there is more to the black experience in America than just quote picking cotton, end quote. Indeed, there is no singular black experience, no singular Latin or Hispanic experience, no singular Native American immigrant or LGBTQ experience. And schools are at the front line of expanding students' understanding of the wider world. And that's a good thing. The Olathe School District is a diverse one. See that tonight. The stats on your own webpage indicate that 35 and a half percent of the district identifies as non-white. It is a disservice to that student population to not acknowledge or celebrate it. And this is key. To do this takes nothing away from the white population. Learning about African American history or Asian American contributions or Latin American culture is not a threat to any white person anywhere. I would even say that to learn some of the more unpleasant parts of history is not necessarily a bad thing. The only way that anyone overcomes negative issues in life is to address them fully. Denial of a problem does not make it go away. Ignoring the facts of American history does not make them any less true. So I'm encouraging the Olathe School Board to continue to promote and pursue diversity, equity, and inclusion as a part of their curriculum and hiring processes. Thank you.
Mike Jackson?
Good evening. My name is Mike Jackson. I'm a proud dad of two Olathe students as well as a graduate of Olathe North myself. In the past few years, I've listened to several of your meetings and I'm thankful to be with you this evening. Thank you for your tireless work during the pandemic and social unrest. It does not seem to be easy yet. From listening to your debates and questions during meetings, you all did not agree. But one thing is clear that you all do respect each other and are focused on our kids in schools. Thank you for recognizing that in order for our kids to stay in school this fall, they needed to be masked. Our second grader, who had no trouble with masks in school, was just happy to be in school with his friends. Thank you for modeling how adults and leaders navigate crisis and conflict. I have no desire to talk about Critical Race Theory as it has nothing to do with K through 12 education. What I am interested in is, interested in doing is saying, thank you for embracing brave and sometimes uncomfortable conversations. that are challenging our schools and communities to work towards a more inclusive and positive environment for students. As a Black man, I have had countless positive interactions during my life in Olathe. I would not be who I am today without my coaches and teachers, as I did not have a healthy modeling at home. However, there are some unfortunate experiences as well where the color of my skin impacted how I was treated. I choose not to linger on these experiences, but would be lying if I didn't say they were disappointing and impactful. My hope is that through education and open minds and hearts, we can eliminate these types of experiences for our students and citizens in our community. With all the negative emotions in our world right now, thank you for maintaining focus on what is best for all students. Please know that you have many supporters who are rooting for you and all involved in our kids' education.
David Brox?
Good evening. In recent weeks, racism has become a huge topic of discussion in the Olathe School District. Our schools are plagued with racist tendencies, and it is imperative that the Olathe School District staff and higher reps are doing everything possible to prevent the cycle from transpiring. Recent situations of racism has been handled unjustly, causing feelings of unrest on behalf of students of color. From a young age, I have felt the differing senses of being in the district, being as though I am an African-American male in a setting like this district. From the way I was punished, to the way certain things were done, and to the way that certain staff members interacted with me solely on the basis of skin color, I have felt the imbalance, and it has become quite discouraging. Around February twenty twenty, I formulated a petition with a few of my friends to help spread awareness of Black issues in the Olathe Schools. And I'm deeply saddened to say that the changes seen within eight months of that petition being formed are nonexistent. Additionally, the blatant disregard on behalf of the Olathe Schools for situations that do come and gain attention, that do come and gain attention has bothered quite a few of my peers as well as myself. As a school district that promotes diversity and inclusion, we as a community are calling on you in our moment of crisis to act accordingly as a school board and not disregard our need for social and racial equality within our schools. As a community, our pleas for the district to be more than culturally sensitive, but culturally sensitive with their actions as well are at their peak of necessity. With numerous instances surfacing now, I have simply been let down by the Olathe School District's conduct with handling issues, and I'm asking that my pleading for social change is heard and considered accordingly. Thank you.
Jennifer Gilmore?
Community, I heard the word repeatedly at the last board meeting, but what does that honestly mean for our Olathe Public Schools? An, an area or group of people who share common interests in this case, our children and their education. Are each of you as board members committed to fostering a community environment with all stakeholders for the betterment of this community? Why is this current school board limiting who may attend these meetings, limiting time that we speak to you, and locking doors to control who enters? As parents and patrons of this community, we have civil rights to express our views protected by the U.S. Constitution. And somewhere along the way, you lost that basic principle that each of you served this community through your role as an elected board member. I had the pleasure of attending my daughter's first live band concert this past week, and the students did an amazing job. And I could see the hard work put in by the band staff in just one quarter of teaching music. But sitting in the audience, watching children play musical instruments masked really made me wonder, is this board honestly interested in building back a stronger community? These decisions are not common sense nor following the science, but they are about control. Why are cheerleaders allowed to sit in a packed gym unmasked while the rest of the student body sits their mask? Why are some groups given privileges because they are your children? Why do you attend indoor public events unmasked without social distancing and then mask here? Is it possible to put policies and practices in place that are, do respect our civil liberties? Send out a poll to the entire district so we do know what our community wants regarding COVID-19 mitigation? Be transparent and communicate when the mask order officially ends. Host a town hall and get community engagement. It's clear today it's needed. If you are relentlessly committed to the pursuit of excellence in our Olathe Schools and the well-being of our staff and students, you'll start doing that today. Thank you.
Brian Donald?
Hello, on the way here, I stopped by the IRC. I want you to know I'm really excited. There, there was a heart screening event. Y'all that know me, that's important to me, and it was full. Secondly, I read every line of every doc in the materials tonight, and I read deep, deep, deep that I want to say thank you for getting new AEDs in every middle school. It was through an outside grant, and I really want to say thank you. That will save lives. Welcome to the meeting that is supposed to be about the business of those representing all of us, kids, parents, teachers, all staff. But somewhere along the line, some of this group lost their way. They stopped advocating and fighting for every child, regardless of color, religion, sex, size, shape. Y'all stopped thinking about everybody. You stopped fighting for the teachers and the staff, began pandering to folks like a union. Teachers Union has fourteen hundred members, but you have fifteen hundred non-union members. Are you fully representing them too? Who's really standing up for everybody? Who's standing up for the parents? It took years to get a raise. Food service, without a raise yet. The IT and the office staff and all the others. Who's standing up for all of them? One of those people is me, and I've been at every board meeting for the last year, really calling y'all to task. And there's other people in this neighborhood, in this community, that are saying every child needs to be treated with respect and dignity. Some of y'all try to shut us down, call us disgruntled and Facebook university students. Well, I'm telling you, we love our kids, you love your kids, but we can do better. This family in this neighborhood, if you didn't see the homecomings, they love their kids and they love their schools. I need y'all to step up and do better for everybody.
Jalon Hollenshed?
Good evening. My name is Jalon Hollenshed, and I'm a senior at Olathe East High School. Uh, attending with me are concerned members of my high school community, and we're here to help you understand that how important it is for our schools to welcome a culturally diverse and contrasting group of students. This requires including a diverse curriculum that represents the diversity of the students who attend our schools. As a young Black man, I am deserving of representation in my classrooms, and I should be able to feel comfortable when I go to school. Some, some of us preach about putting our students first, but we forget that students doesn't, only include your children, but us too. What makes us so undeserving of learning about our history or reading literature that is a reflection of our own experiences? Especially when we have had to sit through year after year of in-depth analysis of every white figure in America. We aren't trying to diminish the voice and experience of the majority, but we want to amplify the voices of the minority. As our community continues to diversify, we have to let our education reflect that. We can't let our students of the future be fooled into thinking that they don't have roots in this country. I want the students that come after me to have even more opportunities than I had. Those students deserve to have a Women's Studies class, or a Latinx class, or a Black History class. They deserve to have pride in themselves, where they come from, and understand how important their experience is to the history of our country. They deserve better than people who think they know what's best for them, but who worked to take away so much progress. As a coalition of students, we implore you to consider how the students of the future will, will conduct themselves if they are impeded by what is or isn't taught in, in their classrooms. Thank you.
Brad McFall?
I've been a social studies teacher for seventeen years, a head basketball coach for thirteen years, and five out of my six daughters attend Olathe Schools. This board has made my daughters cry. This board has made my daughters make comments like, "I hate school. I'm not gonna go to school if I have to wear a mask." I currently live in a world where a woman can choose if she wants to have a baby or not, but I, as the father, cannot choose if I send my kid to school with a mask on or not. Largest school district in the state of Kansas, Wichita, masks are not required. Go right down the street to St. Thomas Aquinas. Masks are not required. Go to St. James. All I'm asking for is the choice as a father. Let me choose what's best for my children. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask all day. Have you guys done the research? I just talked to my buddy at Aquinas last night. He can count on two hands how many teachers wear a mask. He said in his classes, no more than two kids have a mask on. Eight hundred and sixty students at St. James, talked to my buddy last night at St. James, said twenty to twenty-five kids wearing a mask. What is so magical about those schools where they get to choose? I just asked for the choice. My biggest question tonight is, when is the end game? When is enough enough? What, what's the numbers? When is it gonna be our choice? Also, quarantines. The Johnson County Health Department is gonna always err on the side of supreme caution. Okay? But we gotta quit quarantining healthy people. I'm a history teacher. Never in United States history have we quarantined healthy people. And I want to finish with one praise. I want to give a big shout out to Dr. Longnecker and Dr. Sutherland of Olathe South. They really work hard to see who's supposed to be quarantined and who's not, and I wanted to give a big praise to them. Thank you.
Bre Lee Lee?
I want to take you way back to two thousand and nineteen. Let's see if you can remember what these are. Motrin, Tylenol, Benadryl, inhalers, cough medicine. Do any of those ring a bell? Now jump to twenty twenty-one. None of those apparently exist anymore. I keep hearing of kids that have been sent home or kept home for headaches and coughs, but instead of resorting to one of the things mentioned, it's automatically chopped up to the C-word, and the kid is sent home and required to take a COVID test before returning to school. Apparently allergies, asthma, and just a plain tickle in the back of your throat is no longer allowed around here. In case you missed the memo, these kids are still playing with their friends, going to sporting events, neighborhood and church events, and many other places without a mask on. What is so different when they walk into a school building? Why must they put a mask over their face all day long and mess with their mental health and compromise their immune systems? I can't for the life of me figure out why we are all acting like we've never seen a virus before. The flu and RSV are way more deadly to children, yet we have never masked for any of those. What did you utilize the twenty-five-plus million ESTR funds that you received? It didn't cost you a thing to mask up these kids, yet it seems to be the only thing we are seeing being done about COVID. What happened to the air purifiers and other mitigations to help prevent it and to get on a path to reduce COVID and get back to normal life? I'm asking this board to reevaluate the mask mandate and remove it. The COVID-19 dashboard shows cases from a two-week period of September seventeenth through the thirtieth is lower than any time during the first five weeks of school, and most measurables are back to mid-to-late July levels, which is pre-Board of County Commissioner K through six mask mandate levels. The same levels we had during enrollment when we all chose in-person learning because Olathe School District said there was no mask requirement. Now's your time to show us a different side from the lack of transparency, lack of integrity, and the corruption we have been seeing from the board. Just a reminder, I'm the parent, and we are the parents, not this board. Our voices have fell on deaf ears, yet I'm hopeful we will finally be heard on November second.
Courtney Hollenbeck?
Good evening, Dr. Jaeger, board members, fellow parents, and community members. My name is Courtney Hollenbeck, and I am the mother of two wonderful kids, a fourth and a sixth grader, so I have the unique opportunity of experiencing two different levels currently in our school district. I am also an instructional coach for our district, meaning I support new teachers to the Olathe Schools, work with principals, and support buildings with whatever it is that they may need. My purpose for standing before you this evening is simply to express gratitude. As a mother, I'm happy to report that both of my students' years are off to a great start. They are enjoying being with friends, learning new things, and are excited to walk through their school doors every single day. That makes my job as a mom pretty easy. However, from a professional standpoint, I know their happiness doesn't just happen by chance. I know that their happiness is due to the hard work of many adults. It's because of your tireless work as a board, our wonderful administrators, and our very devoted teachers. The teachers that are showing up for kids day after day and showing them love, just like my daughter's fourth-grade teacher who signed an email to my husband and I yesterday with this line, "Thank you for sharing your daughter with me each and every day." I just wanted to come here tonight and say thank you. Thank you, Board, for working through hard times. Thank you to our administrators for continuing to support their staff, for communicating with parents, and supporting kids and families in all possible ways. And lastly, I want to give a shout out and a thank you to our teachers. As I enter buildings, elementary through high school level, I'm continually seeing teachers who show selflessness, perseverance, and positivity, no matter what storm they may be facing. I'm genuinely in awe of the devotion of many of our amazing educators. I am grateful to all of you, and I want you to know that you are appreciated.
Thank you. Megan Bricks?
Um, good evening, Board of Education. My name is Megan Bricks, and I'm a very proud elementary music teacher here for the Olathe Public Schools. Last month, I was so excited to share with all of you the amazing and wonderful things that we are able to accomplish this year due to our students being full-time in person with us. I'm currently in the middle of teaching and preparing for my fourth-grade musical, and my students are beyond excited, sometimes a little over the top, especially since we didn't have full-on musicals last year. Our students are finally going on field trips and making real-world connections to what they are learning in the classroom. I've gotten to know my students so much more this year as I get to see them all, every week, in music class. My students are my why. I get to come to school each day and sing, dance, and play, the best job out there, with my students all day long. As an educator, I'm truly thankful and proud of the students who spoke here tonight. As an educator, we want our students to use their voice, and those who spoke tonight truly did it eloquently. So I truly appreciate you coming here tonight. Now, I have come to you with something that is causing teachers and students to have an extremely tough year. We are in need of substitute teachers. We need to have teachers in the classrooms teaching the students. My immediate thought is of the students and how the lack of subs affects them. I'm not even thinking about myself, I think about them. One student was talking to his mom about how he had six different teachers that day in his classroom. He was excited he got to see all those teachers, but he told his mom his brain couldn't focus. He felt confused when so many people walked through the door. I'm here tonight to ask you for your help. How can we work together and synergize to find a short-term solution right now as well as a long-term plan? I'm more than willing to sit down and help think outside of the box to develop a plan, but we need to do it as soon as possible. I urge us to work together and identify personnel within our district that can volunteer to be called to sub when the need arises. We are the Olathe Public Schools, and we want students to be prepared for their future each and every day, all students, every day. Thank you.
All right, and now we are on to, uh, five point zero one, review of our current mitigation.
As Ann Jeanette walks to the mic this evening, um, a couple others may pop up as, as she works through the information tonight. Um, but we wanted to share just kind of an update of, of where we are as a system, a look at some of our current data, um, things related, obviously, to what we're doing with COVID as a school system. Um, but, uh, she may get some help from a couple of others here tonight after she presents or has the board ask questions this evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, this evening I am here to, as Dr. Jaeger said, just provide an update and review some of our local data. Um, I think it's really important that as we continue to march through another year where COVID is impacting our schools, you continue- you continue to get updates from us. So as a preface, I just want to say that, you know, we are aware of the inconvenience some of our mitigation factors pose on all of us. Students, educators, community members. But if there is one thing to celebrate, it's that these mitigation practices have allowed us to do some of the things that that final speaker spoke on, Mrs. Bricks. We are having band concerts. We are having athletics, community activities. We're allowing visitors to come into our schools and be part of those classrooms. And it's been an exciting year for us. So as I walk through this evening, I'm going to start with data that is specific to the Johnson County community. And then we're going to dive just a little bit closer as we get further into some of our local school Olathe data. So the slide in front of you is going to represent overall new cases of COVID-19 in the Johnson County community between mid-August and the end of September, which is the most current information that we had in preparation for this evening. The one thing that I want to note to you or bring your attention to on this slide is the largest number of cases, if you combine the zero to nine and the 10 to 19 ages, so zero to 18 essentially, the students that we serve in our schools, you'll notice that that represents 33% of the new cases in our county with a total of 6,444 of those cases. Next are the hospitalizations. We wanted to highlight the hospitalizations that were pertinent since the middle of August. And we have seen an increase in the number of students zero to nine who are being hospitalized with COVID-19. There is a 4% ICU rate at the time that we were able to provide this data to you. That is also probably slightly underrepresented because unless they go to a hospital in Kansas, it would not be reported in this information. And we live in a metro area on two different sides of the line. As for deaths in Johnson County, there have been, since the pandemic began, 886 in our county. Fifty of those coming since August 15th, which represents nearly 20% of the total deaths. So we know that the Delta variant presents a different type of presentation to our community. We did not see the numbers that we saw in the student cases last year. We're seeing those student cases this year. We continue to afford our schools with a layered mitigation strategy plan. You all have seen this visual and many of the representations that we've communicated to you over the course of the last year. But there is a responsibility for each of us to have personal mitigation efforts as well as the shared mitigation efforts. We continue to have the increased ventilation in our schools. We are masking. We are encouraging frequent hand washing. We are social distancing when available. We are masking, like I said, universally unless it is during lunchtime or unless students are outdoors. So again, these mitigation strategies have allowed us to be successful with some of those things that I mentioned early on and the activities that really build our school communities. In terms of recommended strategies and the strategies that I just sort of went through, we have the same practices that we have, and we've continued to monitor the strength of those. And the one piece that we want to recognize is that we still do not have vaccinations available for students ages five to 12. However, we do know that those are likely to be present and presented to the community in hopes of sometime before the end of November. The impact on universal masking, I just want to spend a few minutes talking about three important factors. If we were to end our universal masking and go to an optional mask or only some of our population masking. When we look at quarantines, the first thing we look at is to identify whether the parties have been masked. Masking is our way to mitigate immediate transmission. If one party is unmasked, the party who is wearing the mask isn't necessarily able to carry out the full mitigation plan. We honestly see the biggest number of cases in our community sites, in our buildings, that are special program-related where we have students who are non-maskers, not able to mask. And those students then are around other students who may or may not be masking. And that's where we see the primary large numbers of our spread. The other piece that we're seeing is during lunchtime when we have students who are sharing a conversation and they're not masking over the lunch hour and more of that smaller, younger population where they're closer together. So we would look at an increased absence rate due to an optional masking setting. The impact on health, I've spoken about the Delta variant, I think, at least the last three times I've been up here, and the difference that strain has had on our community and the United States overall. Right now, in Johnson County, 100% of the cultures that they're receiving have been the Delta variant. It's definitely more contagious than the original SARS-CoV-2, and it is impacting younger age groups. The impact on resources. Right now, we have testing resources. Those resources are finite, but we do have them. We have submitted grant for grant funding from KSD, KDHE. And we have funding as a district that practices universal masking. Should we end masking? The funding may not be there for us to continue receiving tests where students would be able to test out on day eight and return, or test out on six or after, day six or after, and return on day eight. When I say testing resources are finite, I know Mrs. Morris could speak to you in greater detail on this. But our healthcare system as a whole has made sure that school districts have the opportunity to test students so that we can keep them in schools. And so if we do, if we end universal masking, our resources are going to start to get tapped out with the ability to do that. When we think about quarantines, we did want to represent what we know would have been the case for us last spring. We had 78 confirmed cases for secondary. And we were masking in the spring, and we quarantined 200 students. In that same scenario, if we were to have 78 confirmed cases and we were not universally masking, we would have almost 1,000 students that would be in quarantine. Those numbers represent the difference between staying in school and not having access. This graph was, we wanted, this was something that the Health Department put together. You might have seen this over the course of the last couple of weeks. This is the incident rate. When you look at the Johnson County school districts, you'll notice a particular school district in orange that did not have universal masking. And you can see what the incident rate looked like for that school district compared to the others that have been practicing universal masking. Before school started, the American Academy of Pediatrics made their statement. They continue to stand by that. And it is that we recognize that there is substantial risk with transmission in schools and that we are recommending universal masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors in the K-12 setting. Our recommendation from our local children's hospital came in the middle of September. It was a very similar statement in that our top priority for everybody is to keep kids in school. And their stance was that the masks are able to help prevent infection, and that is the way we're going to keep schools open. I'm going to end by just sharing some brief information about vaccination rates. You can see that in Johnson County, we have about 53% of the population who are 18 to 30 vaccinated and only 19% of those students who would attend schools zero to 17 that are fully vaccinated. The final visual gives you representation by age showing that our students that are zero to 18, full versus partial vaccination. While we are ahead of many counties in the state of Kansas with vaccinations, this continues to be a population where we'd like to have more, more students vaccinated in order to reduce mitigation if we were to remove masks. What questions can I answer?
I always have a question, but I'll ask a, I, I feel like last year, we, we had, we'd put matrix together, and we were still kind of learning on things. And I understand we now have a health mandate from the Health Department, those types of things, and I'm fine with that. I just, I do feel like talking to people in the community, we, I kind of feel like I'd like to know kind of what our end game is. If you hadn't heard one of those speakers mention that phrase, and that's kind of what I was thinking, like, is there, as you're talking to health professionals and those groups, is, like, where are we on? Like, what do we have to obtain to, you know, to, to whether it be high schools, universal masking? And again, I don't, I think part of that is the quarantining and excluding piece of it. So I'd ask that follow-up question as well, like, that part, we need to keep kids in school. But at the same time, if we're going to, you know, be excluding and, and that type of thing, I just would like an update on what you're hearing from that and, like, what is our kind of end game, is that, from that standpoint? So that we can kind of have everybody shooting for something, whether it's a vaccination rate, whether it's a something else. I'm just kind of curious what you're hearing.
Mr. Carey, thank you for the question. I would agree that there are a number of us who are awaiting that same information in hopes of being able to, you know, communicate that out to not only you, but our community. As you mentioned, the mandate is for our younger population. But we continue to collaborate with the Health Department in hopes of getting something that provides us some answers to when might be the right time for that. What does that look like? Is it the number of individuals vaccinated in our schools, that age range? Is it just the percent of cases that we're seeing? What are, what are the metrics that'll help support that? We continue to work with the Health Department on that, and I know we aren't alone. I know other school districts are wanting those same answers for their students as well.
And I, just a real quick follow-up, I don't know if Dr. Jaeger, you know this, and I know you speak frequently with the other superintendents as well. I mean, I think that there's some ways that, like, my biggest issue is the, is the amount of quarantines that we would, you could see the, the slide there showed just how many we would have. Like, are there ways, are there, I know there's, we're learning things, different school districts are on, on testing by day, if that's an option, or things like that. I know that it's being utilized maybe in some places around the country. Are we looking into that? And is there any way, like, again, I'm not saying I disagree with what we're doing right now, but like, maybe even the next month's board meeting, we could get an update on some of those tests. I don't know what they call them, test by day.
Test to stay is what, is what some districts are.
I'm wondering if we can get an update on that and just kind of continue to make progress towards an end game. Again, I'm fine with where we're at today going into this situation, but I just kind of want to make sure we kind of have a target.
We can, we can absolutely do that. You know, as Ann Jeanette mentioned, you know, we continue to collaborate with the Health Department. Most weeks, more than one time, but continue to ask the question, you know, what is the goalpost? What's our end goal here? Because that would help us a lot as a community, I believe, in knowing what it is we're shooting for that the health professionals share. To your point about testing to stay, there are districts in the state that have, have done that. There's been some successes and probably more challenges than successes. But we've had a pretty good relationship with MOD, and maybe Ann Jeanette could talk just quickly in a second about our drive-through testing that we have available. But we could certainly bring back some, some ideas, some possibilities, and some information at the next board meeting. You know, I think the question is a good one. At the end of the day, kids learn best when they're in school. So, you know, the more that we can move forward in meeting that need, I think, is incumbent upon all of us, so.
Yeah. And I'm not suggesting we necessarily have to change anything. I just think us as a board, we need to continue to be educated on what other things we're doing and.
You bet. Would you share a little bit about our testing site?
I'd love to. At the Lindenwood Business Center, it's on Rogers Road. It's where we have our Olathe Transition Supports Program, where we house Access and Focus. I'm putting that plug in because it's a fun group to visit. If you want to go see it, let me know. I'm happy to go over there on the backside of the building, or really, it's the front side of the building. We have opened through a partnership with MOD, our pathology location, a place for school district staff, students, and families to go and receive PCR tests. It's by appointment only. It operates Monday through Friday, nine to three. You don't have to get out of your car. The clinic, MOD, is providing the staff to do it. We basically have given them some space, set them up. Thank you to our technology and Travis, our team, for facilities, getting them space to do this and the technology needed to complete this. So it's a wonderful partnership that we have with them. Again, I'm going to say it, it's PCR testing. So the more reliable it affords you, the opportunity to go take your whole family in the car if you need to, if you've had an exposure or something. By appointment only, and you, they are very quick in their turnaround. It's not like 30 minutes or an hour, but usually by the end of the day or early the next morning, depending on when you get the test, you have your results. Kudos to Sharon Morris and her hard work with the pathology group to get this lifted. Shawnee Mission has been doing it in another school district in the area for a couple of weeks, and it's been very successful. And so we jumped on board when given the opportunity.
Is there a cost for the family or?
It is free.
How do they get an appointment?
There is a number and a link to call. Sharon, do you mind reminding me where they can find that number?
Yeah, when they, when they're told by their nurse, they can get it from their nurse. When they're told that they are.
Needing to quarantine or what?
Or they are positive and they need family members tested.
So for those of you who might not have heard, that was if they're told that they need to quarantine or they're reaching out to tell their school and their nurse that they need some assistance because they've had an exposure, the nurse connects them with all that information and helps them get the appointment. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. So can you go back to the hospitalized ICU cases? I understood our dashboard included, for example, Children's Mercy. Does it not, you said it was Kansas only?
It would include Children's Mercy South.
Children's Mercy South, the clinics that are on, or the hospital settings that are on the Kansas side.
Only on Kansas side, okay. And so Mark is where we, the Mid-America.
Regional Council.
Okay. And do we know if the ICU cases in this graph are, are COVID-related? Or is it all ICU cases?
I, I can't give you that specific. We've been tracking COVID, so I'm going to make the assumption that that's what this is representative of. But I'm happy to confirm that. I think it is COVID cases.
It's on COVID dashboard.
Okay. Yeah, I mean.
It may be that COVID, COVID may be a complicating factor, but the hospitals have to accommodate that isolation.
Okay.
So it impacts.
And then. Okay. Can you repeat that, so?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask Sharon if she'd like to come up and have the mic. I'm going to turn it over to her.
So we can work to confirm that that is what is on the dashboard. And the reason it may look a little different than if you just go on and look at it without, is I have adjusted the sliding scale that allows you to adjust for dates. And so I felt rather than looking at full pandemic information, it would be good to see what is currently what we're dealing with. it would be good to see what is currently what we're dealing with today. And that's what, what those dates are. I can confirm if that is they're hospitalized for COVID, or I, that is my understanding. It could also be that COVID is a complicating factor. We need to consider that even if they are not in the hospital for COVID, they're having to be isolated because they are, they have COVID. And that impacts the operations of the hospital, how they can staff, what beds are available, and the availability of resources. Even if that's not their primary diagnosis, anytime you have an infectious stu, or infectious patient, it's going to impact the whole way that you handle that.
Right. Do, do we know, talking vaccinations, like our high schools? Do we know, are we mirroring the data that we're seeing on the county dashboard? Or do we track internally our vaccinations?
We only know about those that parents inform us of. And we don't require that, that vaccination, and we don't require them to report it. So it, we only know about the ones that we have, that have been reported. On the other hand, the county data, I would say, is probably more accurate because that's getting it from the providers going into the state database.
Great. And, and the deaths in Johnson County? I just, that was the next slide in the slideshow. So the 50 since 8/15, I mean, everyone's tragic. Every death is horrible. But it's not 20% of the deaths. It's 5.6. I just wanted to clarify that on there. So it's horrific, but it's not 20%. And then, so we're, our mitigation efforts, it's keeping our cases pretty low. We're at 0.2% of our student population. And the staff is about mirroring, mirroring the same 0.2% comparatively with other districts in Johnson County. Is that similar experiences?
Yeah, you saw that, you saw that graph that kind of showed, and that is adjusted for the district size. So they have done the math to, to do that as an incidence or percentage versus raw numbers.
That's, I wasn't sure if that was weighted for that.
It was weighted.
Okay. And then our quarantines are about 0.4% for students and about, it's 0.58% for the staff. Is, is it crippling us as far as the staff quarantines is 0.58% challenging? Or is it just another challenge layered on top of pandemic challenges?
I would say that. I think HR could speak more to the, the impact on staffing, you know?
It's a, it's another layer.
Another layer, okay. Okay. And so can we, how are we going to get the kids out of mask? That's, that's the urgent question. So.
I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go for it, answer it, yeah.
No, I was going to say, you know, I, I think we need to continue to work with the Health Department to get the, the guidance from the experts around us. You know, certainly, I think Mr. Gary's question and comments about, you know, potentially, as a next step, really trying to figure out how to keep kids in school when they're, when they're quarantined. You know, as, as we talked about, you know, the quarantine during the, I'm sorry, the, the test to stay piece. You know, I think that's probably something that we can clearly focus on right now. You know, as, as Ann Jeanette or someone said a minute ago, you know, as we meet with the Health Department, as Sharon and her colleagues meet with the Health Department, that's something we continue to, to ask is what is that, that end goal? And what is it that, that we're shooting for? You know, there are stories of districts in the state where they've removed masks, you know, and have gone to kind of a testing model when they remove, remove masks. And it's led to large quarantines. And they've tried to do, you know, the test to stay, that kind of piece. And essentially what's happened is within a week, it has overrun the entire staff and they're just not able to even keep up. So, you know, in a system with almost 30,000 kids, there's a lot of moving parts with that. And, you know, when, when the masks come off, that's one of the reasons why we need to continue to be able to rely on Johnson County Department of Health and Environment. We don't have the staff to manage that right now with, with what's happening in, in our, you know, in our area, which is again, why we need that guidance from them. Because we're relying on them a lot right now for contact tracing and the follow-ups with, with kids and families and that kind of thing, too. So I don't know that that answers your question really well, other than we also believe we need to very clearly know what it is we're, you know, shooting for in terms of a, a target for masks to come off. You know, I've had conversations with several parents this week who I would describe as pretty understanding about where we are right now and appreciative of, you know, us having kids in school and the opportunities that were described by Ann Jeanette at the beginning. But they also want to know, when, when are we going to be done with this? Because COVID is likely going to be here for a while. And so I think the, the conversation is important. And I won't use the word pressure on the Health Department, but that's honestly probably what's happening, is the Johnson County School Districts at least, work with them to try to, you know, figure out what that spot is. Because we're going to have to figure out how to move forward long-term with this.
Yeah, I, I would say if Johnson County Health Department doesn't articulate a framework, we're going to have to come up with something. We're going to have to have a game, game plan going forward. And I didn't support expanding the mask mandate. I understand it's functional. And as people are vaccinated, we're going to have greater hope to get out. But I, I just want to keep just making that message very clear that let's get, if you choose to get vaccinated, please do so. And then the end goal is getting us out of mask. And thank you for the data today.
Ladies, do we have a system where it's easy for parents to volunteer information if they choose to about their child's vaccination status? And, and how do they do that?
All they need to do is provide the documentation to their school nurse, and it will, you know, it, the school nurse will enter it into synergy.
Thank you.
So the vaccine card is what you're saying?
Or vaccine card, doctor's note on the letterhead, you know, anything that's documentation from the medical practitioner that gave it. We're not big.
All right. Any other questions?
We had in your motion, Kristen, an update for this month. Can we expect a monthly update, please?
Sure, you bet. We'll, we'll be ready next month to talk about the test to stay. And we'll also, if, if we're not able to secure something from the Health Department, we'll try to figure out what sort of criteria that we could talk about as a, as a group and you could look at as a Board of Education, so we can accommodate our community that way, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Onto action consent. If there are no questions, can I get a motion to lump those together?
I move to approve action items 6.01 through 6.09 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Schultz, thank you by Mr. Whitcliffe.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
All right. And on to action bids, contracts, and agreements. Does anyone have any questions about these seven items? Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion for all seven.
I would move to approve action items bids, contracts, and agreements 7.01 through 7.07 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeon, is that Ms. Felter?
Uh huh.
Okay, Ms. Felter, second.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right, we have action other. I think we'll take, take these three separately. And we need some delegates for the KASB conference. So just remind, the way this works is we need a couple of names and then a motion to cease nominations. So I, I will be there. I will have other duties. So I'd prefer if there's other people. I don't know who else is planning on attending the conference. Okay.
I'm happy to do it again.
So I hear Ms. Schultz, anyone else is going to?
I'm happy to be the alternate.
All right.
Just say I'll be there.
So we have two names.
I move to cease nominations.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Boyd, thank you by Mr. Gary.
That was quick.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Okay. And now we need a motion to a point.
I move to appoint Kristen Schultz as delegate and Shannon Whitcliffe as alternate, alternate delegate to represent ALATHA Public Schools at the 2021 KASB Delegate Assembly Meetings.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr., or Ms. Felter, second by Mr. McKeon.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes. All right. 8.02, any questions on the easement for water 1? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve item 8.02 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whitcliffe, thank you by Mr. Gary.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
All right. And finally, 8.03, construction easement. If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve action item 8.03 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gary, thank you by Mr. Boyd.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
All right. And on to future action items. Did, did anyone have anything?
Yeah, I got a question, 9.10. John, can you just provide a timeline for that and what that's going to look like for us?
Certainly, as several of you know, we've been working on a bond issue probably for the last 18 to 24 months. COVID caused us to pause a bit, but now we have exhausted our technology funding and our aging facility funding. So we have, in the month of October, right now, we are doing a phone survey, statistical survey about support for various types of projects and levels, levels of financing. We should have our final report on October 15th. On, uh, beginning of next week, we'll have principals communicating out to parents, a sign up for kind of a bond forum, look a lot like a district site council at ALATHA South on October 25th, facilitated by Hollison Miller. We will break out into focus groups and explore the projects and the themes, not only for this bond issue, for, but for future bond issues as well. But the volatility of costs, we'll probably focus on our immediate needs and do more of a short-term bond, not the length of the bond itself. We tend to go out every three to five years. We'll probably have more of a three-year horizon. We'll bring a, based on all of that input, we'll finalize our recommendation to the Board of what projects and funding level, bring that to you on November 4th. Because the process has changed a little bit. We used to go parallel to the county election office and the State Board of Education at the same time for approval. It's now been adjusted, you have to get the state approval first. So we'll go to the state board, then the county. But we were penciled in for a, an election on March 1st, if, if the board decides to move forward on November 4th.
So a couple of things I might add, sorry, John, for interrupting you. The information John mentioned, kind of a focus group forum, principals will be sending that out next week. You know, we will be using, similar to a, a site council format. Many times, though, our site councils have been by invitation, not necessarily, you know, come one, come all. Our intent that night is to welcome anybody who's in our district that would like to provide us feedback and have a, a conversation about, you know, what, what may be included in an upcoming bond referendum. So that will be one piece. The other thing that will happen next week is our community, um, community, community relations department. I don't know if that's what we're actually called, but it sounds good. They, they will be sending out a survey to anyone in our district. Obviously, we'll send it on blackboard to all of our families, but we'll also have it on our website. It will have a short video that will share some information about the kinds of things we do, typically with our bond dollars in ALATHA. But that will be widely available to our entire community. And so our hope there is that anyone who pays taxes in ALATHA, who's interested in providing feedback about what it is we're doing as part of an ex-bond referendum would have the opportunity to give us input that way as well. So a little different maybe than processes we've used in the past, but the, the voice from our entire community, I think, is going to be really important for us. As John said, not only for this bond, that likely will be about a three-year bond, but even looking forward as we, you know, look on other projects down the road, so.
All right. Any other questions? And then we have information, written information, Head Start Director's Report and Student Health Services Annual Report.
Joe, can I highlight that October is Head Start Awareness Month? And Head Start is amazing. They serve birth through age 5. They serve more than a million children across the United States. And it's not just the children they serve, it's also the families and the community because of the early intervention. And it makes, it's so much easier for us, K-12, because the kids have had some early learning interventions. And these are some of the most at-risk children. You've enjoyed it, haven't you? Brad is serving on, you're this year, too?
I'm not.
Who's on this year?
I am.
Head start. Are you enjoying it?
Very much so.
It's wonderful.
And this is the year that we'll be up for grant review. So it's going to be a very interesting year.
That's a good experience, right, Shannon?
It's an amazing program.
It, it's a game changer. So I wanted to highlight that. And then I didn't want to gloss over the Health Services Report. Sharon, I hate to ask you, but do you mind coming back to the podium? Because we, as a district, are blessed to have school nurses. We don't have front office staff taking care of our children when they need an EpiPen or... Sharon, the, I always love the annual report. I found it so fascinating, let me scroll back to the page, that we had a pretty significant decrease in our total health room visits. Do you, I, I didn't give you a heads up, but do you mind, Sharon? That is on page three, two, two.
Two and three, yes. That, I think, is largely, partly because we were not all full in-person. So when you decrease your in-person, that decreases your visits. Also, we did all we could to deal with as much outside the nurse's office as we could because so many times what was in the nurse's office was potentially contagious. And so we wanted to be sure that some of the, the, the items that a nurse might deal with, some of them went out into the, the hallways and even got mobile carts and went room to room. And they would put that as not applicable because they really, with, with the return to class, it wasn't done in the nurse's office. And so some of that was done. And so that, those two, those factors contributed to the drop in the total number of health room visits.
Yeah, by 34%.
Yeah.
We had to get creative, huh? What I found fascinating is that the school nurses were able to return 91% of the students who came to the nurse's office to the classroom.
And that's significant in a year when we're dealing with COVID-like illness and the concern that students were being sent home. The nurses were really evaluating that on a case-by-case basis. And if there were other known diagnoses that would account for that cough or that, or that symptom, because it was documented that they had asthma, the inhaler worked, they went back to class. So night, still, even with COVID, 91% went back to class.
That's amazing. That's awesome. And I get asked this question all the time, and you always include it on, it's on page four of the report. The number of students in our district claiming medical or religious exemptions for the required vaccines.
Right.
COVID is not required, so we're not talking that. In 2020, it was 1.92%. I can't tell you often I'm asked that, but because of vaccines, we don't have measles and tuberculosis outbreaks like, you know, I mean, it's a great management tool, so.
Could I insert something else here?
You're the expert.
Because the, the sense is that we have never quarantined well students, or healthy students, because of exposure to a sickness. We only ever send home the one that's sick. We only ever send home the one that's sick. The reason we think that is because of our vaccination rates. Because if you're exposed to chickenpox and you have not been vaccinated, just like COVID, you will be sent home for that period because anywhere within 21 days, that's the incubation period. You could contract it and you're contagious for two or three days before you realize it and then spreading it, potentially spreading it. So this actually is consistent health practice, a public health practice for us to do it. People just don't realize we're doing it. I was at Indian Trail for eight years. I had several years where I had a student that would be excluded. But because of our 99% rate of vaccination, it would be like one student that was potentially exposed and not vaccinated. And no one noticed when one student at one school was quarantined. So that's the difference.
Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you for sharing that.
Thanks for this report. I mean, the work you do, especially during a pandemic, is amazing. Thank you.
All right, now on to topics for discussion. Any board members have topics they'd like to discuss?
I just wanted to mention the event I attended last night. I know Mr. Hutchinson was there as well. The ALATHA Alumni Association honored five great alumnus of ALATHA schools. They all reference their pride in being ALATHA grads. A variety of years, a variety of backgrounds, but all of them so successful and then including a distinguished Dr. B., who's been with us for 34 years before she retired. So a great event that the ALATHA Alumni Association puts on, it does great things. So it was great to be at that last night. And I just can't help but mention keeping everybody at ALATHA East and everybody's thoughts and prayers as they're going through a lot with losing a coach and then a student this week as well. So just continue to keep that community in your thoughts and, because I certainly am and wish to be doing that. So those are my comments. Thanks.
I do want to acknowledge and thank the students that we heard from this evening. I don't know why I'm continually surprised and amazed by our students, but you know, every time I hear from them, I am surprised and amazed by just the incredible, talented students that we have in our district. And I think it's important, in this particular case, when we hear from our students of color, that we first listen to them, that we validate them, that we believe their feelings, because that's their perspective and their perspective is their reality. So it's important for us as a district to lean into them, to care for them and to let them know that they aren't alone and we are working every single day to address some of the concerns that they brought up. I truly believe that we have the right leadership to take this district to where we need to be. So again, thanks to all of our students that decided to make a brave decision and come out and speak to us tonight. Job well done.
Good job, Brad. Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else? On to superintendent comments.
All right, thank you. My comments actually have become like two pages of paper with notes all over them. So if they sound a little incoherent, I don't know what to blame it on other than my comments are two pages. I'm going to start by reading a statement. I usually don't do that, but it's important to me that I get this right. So I'm going to start by reading a statement. Based on what I say, you may want to respond to that before I go to other comments, but that's totally up to you, just in general. But I want to talk a little bit about the last couple of weeks in our school district. So by now, many of you are aware of a disturbing racially-charged homecoming proposal that recently surfaced on social media. Let me be clear that the behavior exhibited in this situation is unacceptable and does not reflect our core value of inclusivity. In the days following the post, there have been a lot of conversation and frankly, blatant and unfounded misinformation circulating online about how the incident is being handled. This information is not accurate, and I want to address it tonight. As a district, we are governed by and hered to the privacy laws in this country to protect our children. At the end of the day, the safety and education of our students is the most important thing and the most important priority we have as a school district. It is in this commitment that has led our work, it is this commitment that has led our work in addressing this situation with all families involved. What you're reading online is not a reflection of who we are as a school system, our values, our actions, or how we handle tough situations. The heart of our work is rooted in learning and growth. This has not only been a learning opportunity for all of us, but as a driver to continue the important diversity and inclusion work our system started several years ago. As a community and as a school district, we must take this opportunity to be better, and that starts with all of us. We will not tolerate racial discrimination in our school district. With the current incident, we are lurking closely with all the families involved and are honoring their wishes of how they'd like the situation to be handled to best meet the safety and the educational needs of their children. We will not sweep situations like this under the rug. We will take care of our kids and do what's best for our students, staff, and our families. We are asking you to give us the opportunity to address this situation and work to find a solution with those who are directly involved in this incident. Rather than relying on what you read or hear online, we are asking all of our patrons who have concerns to reach out to our schools and our district. And as Mr. Boyd said a second ago, and I think it's really true in this statement as well, the feelings are true. The things that are described as how we've handled it aren't true, but we have to be willing to listen and respond to the feelings that our community, our students, and our staff are sharing with us. Our staff members are ready to have those conversations. They want to be here for you, they want to help to clarify, they want to listen, and they want to understand your concerns. If you're not sure who to contact in our district, reach out to our Department of Diversity and Engagement. They can be found on our website or by emailing diversity@alathaschools.org. We know that our past is not perfect, and we cannot change the way that things have already happened. But what we can control is how we move forward after the last couple of weeks. So I'll just keep rolling once anybody wants to say anything. Okay.
Got your back, yeah, thank you. That's good.
Thank you for saying that.
You bet. So a couple of the other things I want to mention tonight have already been mentioned, so I'm going to mention them as well. But like Mr. Boyd said, I was so impressed by our young people that came to our board meeting tonight. And you know, when you get discouraged about the future, all you have to do is sit with some kids and have a conversation because they really are the solution to what's happening in our world right now. You know, I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to sit with the superintendent's advisory group, which is a planned group that meets with the superintendent and Mr. Alberts, wherever he is over there, on a quarterly basis. And what an amazing conversation we had with those young people and their vision of what our world can be and the things that should change about our world are really important. And I think that was referenced so much by our students who are here tonight. So I also want to thank them for their bravery and their willingness to speak up and speak out tonight. I also want to thank Joy one more time, just because I'm sure I'm already in trouble for a recognition earlier tonight. But you know, sitting there over the last number of years has certainly been a challenge and an opportunity. But we will absolutely miss her sitting with us at our board meetings. I also want to say that we have a vice president in our mix tonight. So John Hutchinson was recently elected as the next vice president of the Association of School Business Officials International. So it's a big deal. You know, one of the things that he says to me all the time is I promise I'm still going to work hard here when I'm doing those things. But you know, the ability to have staff members that are on leadership roles in international and national organizations is really, really important for us, staying ahead of the curve in terms of best practice and innovative ideas in ALATHA. So I'm so proud of John and know that he'll do a great job. And he will be the president after he's vice president. So some of the staff is debating whether or not we'll actually call him Mr. President or not, but we will. Right, John? Yeah. You know, I also, a couple of other things, and I'm sorry, these are kind of written all over the place, and I apologize for that. But one of the things that I just wanted to talk to our community about briefly tonight too is, you know, we've seen in the last couple of weeks the danger of social media. And I'm sad that we've had a couple of our staff members that have been caught in the crosshair of some of that. You know, people make mistakes, that happens. We attend to those and we learn from those and, you know, we get better because of that. But one of the things I'd like to ask our community is, before you go to social media, call the teacher, call the principal, call the school. If you're not pleased with the response or happy with the response you get there, call one of the amazing people that works in our senior team, call me. We learn best through conversation as we have concerns and those kinds of things. So I would just ask our community to do that. It's something we've done well for a long time as a school system. And when we don't get it right, we're open to adjusting. And you know, the conversation really allows that to happen. So I just appreciate the opportunity to do that. And as a side note, I might say, if you have something good you want to share, call and share that too. Schools and our staff, they need to hear that. This is a hard time of year, every year in October in education. They call it like the October slump. There's actually research that talks about that. So I'd say to anybody, if you have a staff member that's making a difference in your life or your kids' lives, let them know, they need to hear that from our community right now. So thank you for doing that. We also had some quick comments tonight about substitute teachers and the challenges that we're having with that. And you know, that unfortunately is another layer of the pandemic and the labor market that we're struggling with right now. But we'd love to have moms, dads, community members who can go through that process, who will help support our school system that way. We'd love to have you as a sub. Go to our HR website, on our district website, we'll walk you through the process, and we'd love to have you, even if it's two days a month. That would be something that would be really valuable to our system. So thank you for considering that. You probably noticed tonight also, we have a lot of artwork in the boardroom. We have a teacher named Jenna Howe who just reached out and said, "You know what, I think you could use some artwork in the boardroom." And so we said, "Yeah, come decorate the boardroom." So she's here, or she's not here with us tonight, but her art is here, her students' art is here. And it has really been fun to look out and see that tonight. So I just want to offer appreciation to her as well. And then the last thing that I want to mention, those of you that follow us on Twitter and Facebook, one of the hashtags we've been using a lot this year is hashtag OPS Moments That Matter. And I just want to share that, you know, certainly we've been using that as principals, staff members in the district, board members have been using it, but it's not exclusive to us. So if there's families and kids out there that want to start having fun with hashtag OPS Moments That Matter, we'd love to have you engage in that with us. It's really been a fun way to see so many of the neat and positive things happening within our school system this year. So we'd love to have you participate that way as well. So with that, I think I'm done with my two pages of things I want to share this evening.
All right. And I believe we just have one executive session, is that correct?
That's correct.
And how much time will we need?
Let's start with 20.
Okay. And it would be 13.01.
I make a motion to move that the board adjourned the executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney to discuss legal issues for the body or agency pursuant to the exception for matters, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, and the board return to the regular meeting at... Do my math formula.
8:15.
8:15 PM, in this room.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gary, second by Mr. McKeon.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.[155.44]
So do we need an official motion?
Yeah. We need to make the motion again.
Moves that the Board adjourns to-
Moves that the Board adjourns to executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney to discuss legal issues for the body or agency pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship on the coda and that the Board return to the regular meeting at, what did they say, 10 minutes?
Eight twenty-five.
Thank you.
Much by Mr. Wecklitz, thank you by Mr. McKeon.
Mr. Gary? Mr. Wecklitz?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Ebridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Selter. Thank you. Got it. Thank you.